Okay, all right. So. The question is, is that why don't you tell Chuck Norris jokes? Because you don't want to know about the punchline. I thought my calendar today was great. I laughed so hard.
That's not even worth a groan.
Oh, and I know, but it was still funny.
That is now part of.
I know, it's now part of the record. Do you have one? We weren't called to order those, so we may be live, but we weren't called to order. Good evening. I was amusing my colleagues with an interesting joke. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, and I'd like to call to order the regular city commission meeting for the City of Oregon City with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marle.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Mayor Denise McGrath.
Present. See, people say we're just really boring. We are not. All right, so would you please, if you can, stand and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this evening, we do not have any ceremonies or proclamations, but we do have one public comment, and I'll call up Seth Henderson.
Mayor, I believe that public comment is for an agenda item.
Oh, okay, you're right, 9-8. Sorry, never mind.
But we do have one that just came in for our public comments.
Oh, too late. Uh, yes, under item number four, Charles. And you know the drill, your name and city of residence for the record, which some of us know, but that's okay. Thank you. Yes, for the green button.
All right. We're green. My name is Charles Gallia. I live at 200.
Nope, you don't need to give your, just the city of residence.
Oregon City.
Yes, thank you.
Outside of the incorporated area, I needed to be clear about that. There's two things that I wanted to mention. One is, is that this morning I attended a meeting of the Office of Emergency Management, and they have a program called Be Two Weeks Ready, and most of the other cities had representatives participating in that actively, and they have websites and resources that they make available at different forums, and Oregon City didn't have anyone there, and I guess I'm the closest that comes to it, and so I actually asked the other people that were participating if they knew of representatives from the city, and they didn't indicate that there was anybody there.
Did we get asked to be on it?
I think every city has been indicated that they requested. I mean, it's a voluntary program that, and Westland, Wilsonville, Milwaukee, all have people that have been assigned to do the kind of community engagement, and I know that resources are thin, and I'll just tell you that I took the training to be a program coordinator, and I'd be willing to work with the city or staff, and there are other people who have also done that, to have a program of Be Two Weeks Ready for different people or citizens in the city. There's an opportunity at the community center coming up in August to do tabling, and they provide resources and education, and it's a pretty low bar, but it's great information for being prepared for, you know, not just the big one, but other emergencies that exist. So that was one thing. The other is, is that I've been tracking the courthouse, the old courthouse in Oregon City, and I had some concerns about the process that was used that resulted in only one proposal coming forward, and since then, I've been informed from other people who said that had they had a bigger window and actually a more equitable review process, they probably would have participated. I know the county is in a process of doing a review and negotiating with one of the, the only proposer, and I would urge the city to have a second look, or at least encourage the county to consider the options that exist for, because it's a potential revenue generating area. That's it.
Get some of that information about two weeks ready. Our, is she back there? Yes, our citizen involvement coordinator folks and the manager could get that out to our folks.
Okay.
In the city and see if we might be able to find somebody who would be interested in volunteering for that. That would be awesome. All right. That is timely information, since we had wildfires last year and there were a lot of people that were not ready. All right, so on item number five, we have a presentation, and as I used to tell our former public works director, John Lewis, this is a project that is near and dear to my heart, so inflow and infiltration program fiscal year 2024, 25 annual report, we will find out how more fabulous we are in doing this project. Thank you, Kenny.
All right, sound is on. All right, so, good evening, commissioners. Here to give the report on the annual INI reports, just to give a quick summary of the presentation, thanks, Evan, I will give a very brief refresher of the program itself, give you some status updates on how the program is doing currently, then take you through projects that have been completed and are being scoped, and then take a look at some budget numbers. So, just as a general reminder of the INI program itself, the main reason this program exists is that there are two paths ahead of us right now when it comes to our sewer expenditures. We can either choose to spend a large but relatively modest amount, a relatively modest in prospective amount of money to fix our system, or we can spend a very large amount of money to fix a treatment plant. We are choosing to spend the still large but more achievable amount of money to fix our system, so we have an INI program, and the areas that are shown in the map up there are the areas that have the worst issues when it comes to inflow and infiltration. Those basins alone account for over half of the flow that goes into the treatment plant that we supply to Wes. So by focusing our efforts in this relatively small portion of the city, which also happens to be the oldest portion of the city, we will achieve the best results. So that's the program's inception in a nutshell. So the main goal that we have here is pretty straightforward. We want to get 65% of the INI out of those basins. This is something that we are tying to the West goal of getting 65% out of the system, because if we do not do that, the treatment plant increase that is already required is going to roughly double in price, so going from about $100 million to $200 million with the Oregon City share of that being pretty substantial, entirely borne by ratepayers. But when it comes to avoiding that negative outcome, we do want to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, so we're looking both at how are we effectively going about this, both cost effectiveness, and then also, are we actually recording what we've been doing and using that data to actually inform our approach going forward? So we have to update our methods using data, and we have some measures of success. Mostly at this point, we're only looking at INI removal, flow, and the percent removal, because the next two on the list, the removal efficiency and capital cost offset, require a little bit more analysis, and honestly, us to have done more work than we have up to this point. We are starting to develop those numbers now with what we have done, so I'd expect that next year I will have more to tell you about those other two metrics of success, but for now, I will have to focus on INI removal. Now, how are we doing currently? We've been making pretty good progress, so this is a reproduction of the general summary sheet that was included in your staff report with the project map carved off, because that's a later slide. But in general, we've looked at about 60% of our pipes, and that's focused on the stuff that we know is in poor condition, so that 40% that we haven't looked at yet is mostly PVC, and we have a pretty good idea of what condition it's in, not to say that we know it's in pristine condition, but we know what the leak sources are, so we can move forward with prioritizing those areas without looking at them in great detail. And we've taken care of about 10% of the pipes thus far, so we've made good progress, but we are still have a long ways to go. And in terms of what we're spending the money on this upcoming year, we'll see that the largest chunk is on program management. That does cover all of the monitoring efforts, so we're taking a year off of smoke testing this year, but we will still be doing CCTV inspections this upcoming year and smoke testing the year after. So, projects in terms of what we've done so far, River Press is all wrapped up. Everyone that lives up on top of the hill should be happy that we will be out of their hair very shortly. Lynn, we've started in on, and then Newell and McLaughlin have quite a bit of work left to be done. So, this is taking a look at the biennial budget of what was approved versus what the program is planning on. The discrepancy is due to the fact that we are still taking in information in real time. We don't have a five-year plan yet, so we're very much trying to determine the best way to spend the money going forward. That being said, we are very cognizant of the financial situation we're in right now, so you will note that every year we are planning in the program budget to spend only up to the amount that's in the commission budget, so we're not asking for a budget amendment or a budget adjustment. We will not be exceeding what you guys have approved. We will not be attempting to find funding in the difficult times that we're in currently. The INI program is very committed to living within its means, so while we will be adjusting our focuses to best fit the lessons we're learning as we go on, when it comes to the top line budgetary numbers, we're very committed to staying on or under budget to ensure that this remains a program that the city can afford. The five-year plan as well is something that has been shifting, so one thing I do want to note is that the five-year plan that's on this slide is ever so slightly different than what was in the staff report, and this is the level of real-time adjustment that the program is making at this time. We only just started this five-year planning process earlier this year, like sometime in February, so we're still very much refining where we need to focus our efforts, what we can deliver, and what kinds of timeframes. So while we are solidifying this five-year plan, the specifics of when individual projects are going to be expected to appear or disappear is going to shift ever so slightly, but those top-line dollar amounts, when it comes to the amount that we're going to be spending year by year by year, that we're not going to be adjusting. If anything, we're going to be always aiming to come in under what we tell you guys, so that you always have confidence that when you approve the INI budget in each of your biennial budgets, the INI program is going to stay within what you guys tell us to. We may adjust our, we may adjust our focus based on what we learned, but we are very, again, cognizant of the amount of money that we have available to us. But in general, we have a very near-term goal in the program of taking care of some work that we have to do to coordinate with our other major partner programs, so we have WIFIA that has certain water projects that they want to get done, so we need to coordinate around areas where they have planned work. That's mostly just near Waterboard Park is the focus going to be in the next couple of years, and then PMUFO also has a desire to begin paving streets in the McLaughlin neighborhood, and so I'm coordinating very closely with the PMUFO program to make sure that I'm covering areas in that neighborhood that make good sense to then come in pretty much on my heels and pave, so.
You might just explain what that is, because not everybody knows what those initials are.
Oh, of course, thank you, Mayor McGrath.
It's all right.
The pavement maintenance utility fee is something that we all pay as part of our utility bill, and it's what we use to fund a lot of the street maintenance here in the city, specifically focused on local streets. So if you want the street in front of your house to be paved, chances are PMUFO is the vehicle that the city will use to do it.
Awesome.
So INI wants to coordinate with PMUFO so that areas that have not been getting as much attention as the residents, I'm sure, in those neighborhoods would like, can finally start seeing some improvements, because in all honesty, a big part of what was holding it up was the condition of the sewers in that area, so we're clearing that up, and now paving can resume. And, believe it or not, I hit the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Questions? I wanted to ask, so I know when we were reviewing the budget, we looked at the contribution that we were getting from Wes and how that helps offset the program. Could you just talk about that very briefly?
Of course. We get one-third of our money that we spend on INI back from Wes, so we spend $1 million, Wes gives us $333,000. So in that way, we've been able to pretty heavily leverage the funds that we've accumulated in the sewer fund up to this point, and we've been making them go quite a bit further. And the biggest contribution that the West match has allowed us to do is to bring in the portions of laterals extending from the property line to people's homes. That's where a lot of INI is hiding, but it is also difficult to reach and takes, it costs money, so as it just so happens, that 33% covers that extra cost.
Awesome. And then the other thing I wanted to ask is, on the map that you showed of the different basins, so the Lynn basin is where we had, a few years back, we had a, we had, we were not able to allow people to do development there. We had, in essence, we didn't declare a moratorium, but we had a sewer moratorium, and so has this helped alleviate most of that situation?
So the moratorium itself was resolved through the moratorium projects, but one thing that I had written in my notes, but I didn't discuss in any more detail, is that part of INI is not necessarily fixing the problems that we have now. We've taken care of most of our most urgent sanitary sewer constraints. However, if you don't fix the pipes, they only get worse, and the INI flows actually continue increasing, so one of the things that I looked at earlier today is, what would I expect to happen if I didn't do this program and I just let things deteriorate? And I found out that approximately another, give or take 40,000 or 50,000 feet of pipe would suddenly be undersized, and so in the previous moratorium project to fix it, that was, I believe, was about, Dana, do you happen to recall, was it about 5,000 or 8,000 feet? It was a relatively small amount. But at any rate, it wasn't nearly as significant as that number I just threw out there, so whereas the moratorium could be resolved for roughly $10 million is what I looked back at the, when I looked at it, the looming cost there was tens to maybe even $100 million in terms of pipe upsides is needed if we didn't resolve the issue. So that's what we're trying to shoot here, is to offset that ever having to happen.
And then my last question is, you mentioned something in your presentation about what you were finding into the grounds, you were saying, so this is old PVC? I mean, I know PVC's been around for a while, but obviously, there's different categories, and if it was, you know, 70s PVC versus 80s PVC, so have you, have you found that those, that?
It's 90s PVC, actually.
What did we use? I mean, we have, we've had ductile iron and all sorts of other crazy stuff, but.
So, without getting too technical, there have been certain improvements in the technology that have occurred in the last 15 or so years, certain kinds of connections that when you cut into a line to put in a new service, when you do them now, they're watertight. When you did it in the past, they were not, so we're finding a lot of leaking joints where laterals drain into the pipes, and it's extremely predictable.
Good. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much. Of course, great work. Keep it up.
Thank you.
All right. So we have item six, we have adoption of the agenda, and we have a number of items on the consent agenda, and is there anything anybody would like to ask about, or is there a motion?
I moved to approve the consent agenda. Second?
It's been moved in second, second by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda, items A through L. M, excuse me, M, forgot about M.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Marle.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor McGrath.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Make it your wish, Rocky. All right, so we have tonight on our agenda, we have item number eight, we have three public hearings, and these are not land use, well, excuse me, the second one is a land use hearing, so we will generally follow our regular procedure that we have, so we'll have a presentation. I'll open the public hearing, we'll have a presentation by staff, we'll have questions, we will have more questions, then we'll have any public members that want to speak come back, and the mission will deliberate, and then we will move on from there. All right, so let me open the public hearing to adopt a resolution modifying system development charges for parks and recreation facilities, and that would be Mr. Archer and his.
And team.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioner. Scott Archer, Parks and Recreation Director. Also here to help is Tom Kissinger, Deputy Parks and Rec Director, and Deb Galardi, our lead consultant from Galardi Rothstein Group.
Hi again.
So the background on this is that the parks' system development charges, or SDCs, were last revised and updated in 2000, so they're just a mere quarter century old at this point. last revised and updated in 2000, so they're just a mere quarter century old at this point. Commission set a goal in your 2023-25 goals to update or revise our parks' SDCs methodology in conjunction with the process to also update our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is also on your agenda tonight for a second reading. So the proposal that's in front of you is a resolution that would adopt the methodology, and so that's what is before you to consider. With the Commission's goal and direction to update this parks' SDC, we contracted with Gallardi Rothstein Group back in 2023. The work has been proceeding since then. The Commission received a couple of progress reports along the way at two separate work sessions. The most recent of those was February of this year. And from the feedback we received, there seemed to be the desire to bring this through the adoption process with that conversation. And so this public hearing tonight is a requirement to adopt these fees. In accordance with ORS, Oregon Revised Statute, this hearing was noticed 90 days in advance. And we also provided a copy of the SDCs methodology that was made available to the public no less than 60 days in advance of the meeting tonight. To date, or up to today, we had received no written comment based on that availability to the public to provide comment. So with that, oh, I also want to mention, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, PRAC, did also review the methodology as it's proposed, and they actually reviewed that at two separate meetings, and most recently in May of this year, and they did support this coming forward as it's being presented. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Deb Gallardi. Let her walk through a presentation just to provide you the, where we're at and what we're proposing, and then, of course, we'll be happy to answer questions.
I like the picture of the, on the front of the report with all the ducks. They have users there, you know?
Okay. Good evening. I'll keep this short, since the Commission has seen this information a couple of times. Just to give an overview of our objectives, SDCs are about collecting from new development, the costs associated with providing facilities to serve new development. So that includes both forward-looking improvements, as identified in the Parks Master Plan, as well as more recent improvements that the city has made that will also serve new development. And we also, because the city has adopted land dedication policies, we needed to make sure that the SDCs were structured in a way to integrate with those policies as well. We also looked at how the SDCs are charged to different types of new development and to look at scaling the SDCs for residential development, consistent with some of the other SDCs that the city charges. So that means charging less SDC for a smaller home and a higher SDC for a larger home. And then updating the non-residential, so commercial industrial categories, and assumptions to be more consistent with current information. On the cost side, this table shows that the overall revenue target from the SDCs is $50 million, approximately. The bulk of that is from the forward-looking improvement fees that are, come out of the master plan project list. The $43 million that was identified as growth eligible on the improvement fee is about 42% of the total project costs from the parks' master plan list. So there are not, SDCs cannot recover 100% of those costs, because some of those costs are related to existing deficiencies, increasing the level of service for existing development. And so the methodology works through a process to determine what is the appropriate share from future growth. And then the reimbursement fee is about $8 million. Those revenues can be used by the city for any capital-related expense for the park system, so they're very flexible funding source and good to have for utilizing on replacement or other kind of park needs. And then finally, the last and smallest component is the compliance costs. The statute allows you to charge SDCs and pay for costs associated with complying with the statute, like my time and a portion of master planning costs, to develop the project list. So overall, about $50 million was identified as being related to future growth. The updated methodology follows very closely with the current methodology, which is that we went through that structured process to identify the portion of costs related to future growth based on level of performance standards identified in the master plan. The total cost then gets allocated between residential and non-residential development based on their estimated impact. Consistent with the current methodology, neighborhood park costs are recovered only from residential development, because there is the closest proximity, or the closest nexus for that type of development and park type. The last piece is the charge basis, and as I mentioned, the major change is to go from a categorical SDC for residential development, where it's a uniform rate within each category, single-family, multifamily, and to charge that tiered SDC based on the house size for single-family and middle housing. The non-residential SDC continues to be based on the building size, because it's an estimate of the number of employees that can, or are associated with different types of businesses. And so we didn't change that method, we just updated the data to reflect more current data from Metro. This table shows the SDC schedule for residential, and it shows you the five tiers that start with the smallest, less than 800 square feet, and up over 3,800 square feet. These, the factors, the tier factors, 70% for the small and up to 120% for the largest category, those come out of a study that Wes did, and so it's consistent with the other SDCs. So you can see that the scale of the updated SDC ranges from about 8,700 per dwelling unit for the smallest category to close to 15,000. The current SDC is just about 8,000. So the scaled SDCs provide a basis for the smallest homes to not increase very much under this, the calculated, full calculated amount, and then scaling up, obviously, to a greater increase for the larger homes, which have a larger impact on the system through more, a greater number of occupants on average. Just to see how that compares with some other cities and districts within the region, you can see the green line near the bottom is the current SDC, and actually, it's been updated since I first put this chart together. So as I mentioned, it's now just over $8,000. So it doesn't change the position relative to the other cities, but just know that that is about $8,000 now. And so there's quite a range of SDCs from 4,000 to almost 17,000 in this example for a typical single-family home, and the updated SDC falls kind of in the middle there. For non-residential SDCs, the impact really varies on the type of business or institutional industrial customer. You can see that the, there are a number of different land use categories, and the fee is based on, is a cost per thousand square feet of building area, and reflects the estimated number of employees per thousand from data developed by Metro. So it is the best regional data that we have to base the SDCs on, it's what most other communities use for non-residential. The cost per employee is $707, as updated. As I said, this includes, excludes the cost of neighborhood parks. The current SDCs range from $26 per thousand square feet to just about 2,300. And you can see in this table, even though it's a little bit small print, that the floor is increased quite a bit to 200. The smallest SDC for any of these categories is $200 per thousand square feet. But the top is about $2,400 per thousand square feet, which is similar to the top of the current scale. So it really is going to impact, the impact is going to vary based on the type of use. And we've shown the Commission before a number of different examples for non-residential. This, just, I provided here the office, general office comparison, and this shows similar to what residential showed, that the current SDCs are on the lower end of the spectrum, and that the updated SDC would just bring you a little bit more towards the middle. So in no way are these out of the range of other communities. In fact, they're kind of right in the middle. And as Scott said, we followed the process required by the statute to notice for the public hearing and make the methodology available. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay. Oh, thank you. Yes, oh, go right ahead.
I've got one at this, I think I've got one at this point. A couple of slides ago, the, on the, the non-residential, it was $707 per employee. What is it now?
I believe it's 500-something. I didn't pull that sheet from the current, from the website of what the current SDC for the employees. It's 550, something like that.
Okay.
It's, it's a similar kind of increase as the typical single-family, you know, so it's a significant increase of 25, 30%, I think, is the...
So do we want to go through all our questions now, or are we going to hear from the public and come back? Wow, what are we going to?
Whatever you like. If you want to ask your questions now, or they can come back.
Okay. Well, I've got one other I'll ask now.
Please, go ahead.
I'd see that we've tiered single-family, which I think is great. I brought that up when our goal-setting session is something we needed to work on. But the same thing wasn't done for multifamily. Multifamily is still one charge, whether it's a studio up to a three-bedroom. What's the reason? Why didn't we use the same tiered approach?
Well, as I said, Wes, the water, the sewer utility was the one who developed this for single-family, and it's my understanding that was based on looking at what the actual use for the impact on the sewer system was for different-sized homes. It was actually based on good data where they could tie back the, to the dwelling, the utility account to square footage, so to understand that relationship. It's really hard to do for multifamily, because there's like one meter that goes to a building of different-sized units, and the information just isn't available to do that kind of analytical exercise. We also find that the, you know, the range is not as great, that with single-family units, you have, you know, 800 square feet to up over 4,000 square feet. You don't find that same kind of range in multifamily. So I don't know, I wasn't involved in the Wes study and why those decisions were made. That's generally why we don't see scaling tiered systems for multifamily to the extent we do for single-family.
So Mike, is your concern about the number of units? And there's a base cost, and then that's it?
No, my concern is that, let's say there's a building and it's all one-bedroom apartments, and they're paying 8280 on this new guy. If there's a building and it's three-bedroom apartments, they're still paying 8280 per unit. And you've got, in the one case, you might have a couple, and the other, it's more likely, you know, there's a couple of kids, so you've got twice as many people, at least, but the charge is the same. And that, I mean, I understand that it might be a little harder to get the data, but, you know, could we make assumptions that there's at least some difference between the two?
Yes, it has been done, and it could be done.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, I was able to find the current non-residential, and it's $519.
Well, I'm sure you'll be coming back, so...
Yep, I'll have more.
Yes, I'll go ahead and call on the members of the public. So you can both come up, and you can take the table on the right or the table on the left, depending on whether you're on the right or the left side. So William and Seth. William, first.
I was waiting for the green light. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is William Guilford, I live in Oregon City. I think with the concern of development, particularly of housing, in our fair city and in the state in general, that we should very seriously be concerned about adding additional expenses to development. With that said, I'm reminded that a few years ago, I made a special request to Mr. Scott Archer about the economic impact and the value of parks and trees. And he produced some pretty significant statistical data to me that talked about the value of property, that is, the increase in value of property based on the proximity of parks and the abundance of trees. That people like parks, and people like trees, and I just want you, when you're making your decisions, to think of the economic balance between what has to be paid to achieve that livability and the cost, the additional cost to development. So I think you're on the right track, so keep up the good work.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Seth Henderson, and my personal information's on the contact card. I put together this testimony before that presentation, the questions from the DISO. As a mixed-use multifamily developer, I had some relevant data that I wanted to share with you, as well as a couple of suggestions that you might want to consider in regards to these SDCs. So two projects currently that I'm working on, the first is one in Gresham, 117 units, we just broke ground in April. The SDCs are less than $10,000 per unit, and we're at about 4,700 for parks there. Wilsonville, 114 units, entitled, permitted, breaking ground later this month. We're about 16-8 in SDCs per unit, and parks are about 5,800 per unit. Where you sit today, you're over $26,000 per unit in SDCs. With this bump, which is about 30% for each multifamily unit, you're going to be over 28,000. And so it's great to look at a chart of kind of where you align with the other cities. The most important thing is, how do you, what is the ratio of average rents to those SDCs per unit? Because if you're 20% lower than another city, but their rents are 30% higher, more projects are financeable there, more are going to get built, you're going to realize those SDCs, and you're not going to have to raise SDCs later on, because you have shortfall there. Similar to what Commissioner Mitchell said... Similar to what Commissioner Mitchell said, uh, I, I did some digging into the data and uh, kind of went down that rabbit hole, but it's 1.78 people per multifamily unit is what's currently proposed. Um, what that means is you have a cottage cluster of six studios, you have 11 people. You have a cottage cluster of six three-bedroom apartments, you have 11 people. So you are pushing to develop larger units and you're making the average rent higher in Oregon City. So if you want to promote, uh, units at a lower cost level, um, you know, having a tiered system might be a, a good way to look at that. Uh, the one other thing that I was going to mention is, um, the pool. That component is 50% of the development cost, 40% of the total cost and 23% of the total growth. Um, you know, if, if you believe that that's a project that you want done in a timely manner and that the people in the community support it, uh, you might want to consider an alternative, um, funding mechanism, maybe a parks bond or something to get that project done faster and with some certainty. Um, and pulling that out would actually reduce the SDCs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Great. Um, staff, would you like to come back up? More? Have more questions, Mike?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Um, in your, your presentation, so did I understand, um, the, um, replacement, the $8 million that's replacement? That it's more, um, we have more flexibility in what we can use that money for?
Correct. It's the reimbursement fee and that is associated with the, yeah, the past investments that have available capacity. And yes, absolutely. It doesn't have to be spent on things that are on the project list, or it can be spent on things on the project list that aren't, uh, part of the improvement fee eligible. So yeah, there's lots of flexibility.
Okay, couldn't be used for maintenance?
Well, no, it has to be a capital. It can't be operation and maintenance. It can be.
Okay.
Anything that's capitalized.
But it doesn't have to be for additional growth.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I do want to talk about the pool for, for the Rex, or aquatic center for a second.
The current one?
Pardon?
The current one?
No, the proposed.
The one that might be in the future, okay.
The, the one that's in the plan. Um, early on in the report, it said that you excluded 50% of the cost because of out-of-town users, right? Okay, and, and then on the, um, appendix B project list, no, wait a minute, excuse me. Oh, come on, Mike. Where'd that $9 million amount go? There it is. Um, so it shows nine, a little over $9 million as being, I guess, SDC eligible, right? So you took the 40 million, cut it in half to get to 20, and then, so like 45% of that 20 million is growth-related, so it could be SDCs.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is, this is a question and I don't, I don't have the answer, but if it's a, if it's a $40 million project and, and we're hoping to collect $9 million in SDCs to put toward that, that's going to take a long time. And the longer it takes, the more the cost of the project goes up. Also, if we're trying to bank $9 million, we're not able to do $9 million worth of valuable projects elsewhere on our list. Um, and we still need $31 million from somewhere. And I'm just, I'm just throwing a thought out there. I, I can't see that it's going to be that much, that it would be that much harder to get public approval for 40 million as it would for 31. So would we not, and this is, this is just the question, the thought to throw out there, would we not be better off to go for 100% of that as a bond or levy or whatever? Because it's going to be a big ask either way. If we assume these numbers are right, it's, it's 41 million or, or 31 million or 40 It's a lot of money either way, but should we keep our SDCs free for other projects and then work with our community on what they want and what it's going to cost and, and, and see that as a separate project? So that's, that's just a thought I want to throw out there. And I think that's all my questions.
I, I guess I don't presume that the SDCs were going to be, they're going to be a drop in the bucket compared to what funds we need to build a, such a facility. It will be part of it, but I think we had, at least I had made some assumptions that no matter what road we went down, there was going to have to be a public ask.
Absolutely.
I, I just don't see, I don't see.
I don't think there's any way to avoid that.
No, there's no, well, I'm not trying to avoid it, I'm just saying there's no way around it.
Yeah.
If, if the public, you know, after we go through the process of determining what the public wants or what they generally think they want, and we come up with the price tag, you know, then we're probably going to have to do a little value engineering, as they call it, and ratchet it down, um, to what, you know, we can possibly present and, you know, because I know what I've heard from the community, some people already, they want, you know, let, let's just use the nomenclature, the Taj Mahal. And I said, I don't think we can afford a Taj Mahal. I said, I don't think that's in, in the budget unless somebody leaves us a big old ton of money. So I think your, you know, your question is, is are, are we looking at different ways to complete the pie chart of how we fund this thing?
Because, I mean, we all know this, it hasn't been directly said.
And you're on chart, if you might want to tell your fellow folks here what chart you're looking at there.
Oh, um, it's on, uh, page 21 of the final draft SDC methodology. Because if you don't have that $9 million on there, these numbers change a lot and the need for an increase changes a lot because if development doesn't, if, if there's zero development, there's zero SDCs. And if we price ourselves out of the market and, and don't get the development that we would otherwise get, we're not going to have not only the $9 million to put toward a pool project, we're not going to have the money to put toward the other $32 million on there or $34.
Well, what do you think? Speculation, we're speculating.
Well, and I think what you're talking about right now is certainly it's, this is the commission's choice. And so the, the methodology's developed around, uh, what is projected in, you know, the, the capital development, um, the growth that we can tie to that development, and that's how the methodology gets created. So the aquatic facility component of this, I think what you'd be looking at is if you did not want to include that, it wouldn't, I don't think the 9.1 approximately million dollars wouldn't go to other projects. I think, Deb, help me out if I'm off track here, but I think you basically would eliminate that component of the SDC methodology, which would then reduce the, the rate, uh, because the methodology's already baked based on those, those components and, and the growth, right? So really, it's, it's a, it's a choice of the commission and that's, that's the choice when you go to discuss adoption, is you can, you can adopt the resolution with the methodology as proposed, you can adopt it with modifications at some less, lesser level. Uh, we can't go above the methodology that's been developed because that's kind of a legal basis of how we can charge, or you cannot, uh, you know, of course, not approve it at all.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, yeah, it did. Uh, yeah, I, I think Mr. Archer presented it very well. That $9 million would go away. All of these numbers change the need for that large an increase. Um, for instance, on residential, it, the, let's just assume that the, uh, average size home in Oregon City, new homes, is between 1,800 and 3,000 square feet. I think most of them probably are. That makes the parks' SDCs $12,466, which is a 54% increase over what it is now. I know that's 54% just on the parks, which is only a chunk of that, but I think the parks is about 20% of the total, if I figured it right. So it's going to take the total up, I think, at least 10% or so. And, uh, is it, it becomes, does it become a little bit self-defeating if we put an increase on it that holds back development? And there's, there's no answer for that? It's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. What I, what, what I worried about when we talked about this with the adoption of the Parks Master, not adoption, but when we talked about the preparation of the Parks Master Plan and how we went about looking at what we would like for the future, we all understood that there was a substantial deficit. And this is not in any by, you know, cut, closing that gap, but it is getting us closer. And I think it would be less painful if we had somehow been able to increase the SDCs. You know, we're talking 25 years and why we never, I say we collectively, not this commission, but why we never collectively looked at incrementally increasing it. And that's, that's, that's kind of the dilemma that we are in right now. We're asking to bite off a big chunk for something that we neglected for, you know, for whatever reason, um, just didn't do it. And while our new areas have dedications of parks and some funding to go with them, it's not, you know, we, it's, it, there's not a lot of equal, there's not equity across the board with our parks. And when I looked at the charts and the plan again, on how much we would like to have or what the, what the recommended standard is, you know, we're still far below that. And so between, you know, our, our library as being highly, you know, people are highly satisfied with, the next thing that they're satisfied with is, is with our parks, which is, you know, given the state of some of our parks and, and, you know, we're trying to play catch-up all the time, um, I'm, I mean, I'm happy that people feel comfortable, but we all know they could be, you know, so much more better, could be much better. So I don't know where, you know, where the middle ground is and I, you know, part of what my dilemma is, is, you know, is biting off that, biting off that big chunk that we know we need to get to and how we, you know, there's just not a lot of equity right now that I can see. But I remember, remember we were going through, doing the tiered system? We were doing that tier. We were saying, okay, we think this is and this, and then we went through and that was residential, primarily single family and all of that. But, um, I guess I didn't realize the SDC was going to be as, as high as it was for 800 square feet, because that's basically a little unit or an ADU or, you know, somewhere in there. So where do we want to go with this? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I've had a hard time going back and forth because, um, well, first I'll say, um, I just want to echo a few things that Commissioner Mitchell said. Um, I'm, I'm pleased to see the tiered structure for the single family. I know that's been something that I've been talking about since I got on and that we've been talking more about, uh, in recent years. And so I, I really appreciate that and I do share the concern that was, uh, talked about as it relates to the multifamily units. Um, and recognizing that it may be a little more difficult to determine that, I, I, I mean, could it not just be as simple as the square footage on those ones as well? Or the amount of bedrooms?
Correct, yeah. There would have to be some basis for.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, because that, that would be something that I would like to see us consider. Because I'm always going back to how can we incentivize development of, uh, smaller units, more affordable units? And I don't want to give a perverse incentive, uh, to go the opposite of what our goals as a city are. Um, we have to recognize that all the costs that we, um, put in front of developers as they're going through the process is inevitably, uh, passed on to whoever is going to be purchasing or renting those proper, or renting those units. Um, and so I, I'm very cognizant of that as well, but at the same time, um, it, it's what you said, it, it, this should have been done gradually over the years and, um, that's not something that we can change now. Um, but I think that we do know of, uh, a lot of potential developments that, uh, some, some particularly large developments that are coming down the line, and I would like them to, uh, pay their fair share for the system. But then going back to the other side, I, I don't want to be speculative about the development of the, uh, aquatic and recreation center of whether that development happens in the first place. So I'm kind of stuck in the middle of, because I, I see both of them and, um, that, that's what I'll say for right now.
I will echo some of your thoughts and I, I do think that the idea of tiered SDCs for multifamily units makes sense based on the size. Um, because I would like to, you know, as Commissioner Morrow said, incentivize smaller units and potentially look at some kind of tiered system. And I was actually thinking the same thing. Can we look at like bedrooms, right? How many bedrooms does it have and create a system based on that? Regarding the aquatic center and, and the, you know, the comment, you know, about $9 million, you know, there are an ask between 31 versus 40. I mean, that's, that's 22%. Like, that's a pretty significant amount of money. Um, and I would like to, if we're, you know, going to the public for an ask, I feel like, you know, we should work on that and ask for, uh, I don't want to say as little as we can, but like, recognize let's, what can we do? And then we'll come to the public for the rest. So I mean, that's not, it's not an insignificant amount.
But see, we don't, we don't know what the, what it's going to be, so we can't.
Fair.
We can't really go out to the public and say, oh, we're only going to spend between 31 and 40. We don't know what the public wants yet.
Correct.
I mean, you know, I've already had, like I said, people say that they want, you know, we want what, you know, what Happy Valley has. Well, I don't know if we can afford what Happy.
But we know there will be an ask.
Oh, yeah. We know there will, yeah, there will be an ask.
I, I believe that it's incumbent upon us to gather monies that we can so that when we do go for an ask.
We make it as little as.
Correct.
Yeah, depending on what our community wants.
Correct.
I mean, they, you know, they want it all, but.
I mean, yeah, whether it's a $10 million facility or a $60 million facility.
Well, I don't think it's going to be a $10 million.
I'm just, I'm, I'm using extremes here. I'm using extremes as an example.
I wish it was going to be 10 million.
I know, it'd be amazing. You want, you want a heater? You want, alright.
Yeah, yeah. We want a heated pool versus an unheated pool. That's the 10 million right there.
I, I understand, but, but the idea is that I, I do believe that we have a responsibility to, to gather monies outside of the public.
Much as we can.
Yeah, so I, I would be open to looking at how we can reduce the amount that we're projecting to come from SDCs toward this project, but I do believe that, I mean, that's what SDCs are for and I, I can't be persuaded else, otherwise, that part of the reason why we're, uh, needing to have a new facility is because of the growth that this community has incurred and that's what SDCs are for. So I think that it needs to be a part of it, but, uh, the proportion of that is something that I'd be open to taking a look at to see if that reduces the sticker shock that we impose.
Well, like I said, I, I would feel more comfortable about that if, if I had in front of me, this is what the public wants. We don't know that yet. That, that we're going to have to, we're going to have to suss that out, so. Mr. Conkle, are we getting the cart, a little bit of the cart before the horse here?
No, I think this is what we're down to.
Well, I know, but we're, we're trying to project what possible fees for a, a center that we don't know what it is yet. I, I can't, I can't get my head around that just yet.
Right, but I think the, the, the questions are really two that I'm hearing, right? We know what the SDCs are based on the existing methodology. You know, could we go back and say, okay, come back with, you know, the, the $9 million that's assumed, you know what that's going to be, right? We could do 5 million and we could do zero, right? So that you can see the impact on the SDC, um, by reducing the, the pool component of the, of the, of the cost, right? Uh, the other thing would be, I think I'd like, I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about with, with staff, if we were to tier the multifamily, I'm not quite sure, you know, the bedroom versus the square foot, right? Just from a implementation standpoint.
It would be hard.
Um, you know, if it's a straight apartment complex, you know, you know. You know, if it's a straight apartment complex, you know, you know, I guess, I would just want to talk through, is it easier to say, okay, it's a three bedroom, right? Or are we going to get into the square footage of each three bedroom? Right? Just from a, just from an implementation standpoint, right? And then, you know, what do we do with the lobby space? You know, if there's an indoor pool or a rec center or a component, right? I guess I just want to think through that a little bit of how that gets implemented and what would be the best, right? Because you could imagine, you know, you've got a mix of a studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, right? Every studio is not going to be the exact same square footage, right? Just because of the layout of the building. So, you know, do we want to get down to, you know, I guess, you know, it'd be like, it'd be like the residential though, it'd be a less than or a greater than, I suppose. I just want to think through how, what that would look like.
Well, before you answer, let me do one thing here. I'm going to close the public hearing and then we can continue and have more discussion. So let me, let me do that.
I think talking with, with staff is a, is a great idea. But, but to me, the, the number of bedrooms, it's, is pretty clean. Even if we're charging, we're charging now by unit, all the same, the, the pool and the fitness center and all that stuff just comes along with it, no matter what the mix of units is.
I think, that's why, I'm, I'm assuming it does, right? I'm, I would be pretty sure it was. Because there's no, there's no, uh, you know, there's no residential components having a pool, right? I mean, the units are what they are.
Right. What do we, how do we do it now?
But right now, we just do it off units and we don't pay attention to those other things.
Yes, I'm almost, that's why I want to talk with staff. I'm, I'm pretty positive that's how we do it. We, we may do it, I just want to talk to them about what we do when we have, because like in offices, you know, we break out non-happable space from the total of the square footage that's eligible. I'm just not sure what we would do with something like the COVID edgewater, right? Where we had a rec center and it had a kitchenette and the, you know, I mean, there's, it's, it's mixed use, but it's not like a commercial mixed use like we think of it, right? But you're right, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we're not leaving something on the table or it creates confusion down the road.
To me, square footage would just get way too complicated when number of bedrooms is a pretty direct indicator...
I agree.
On average of how many people are living there and flushing toilets and using water and whatnot.
I said maybe because, you know, you have, think about back to our college days.
Oh, yeah.
We had a studio apartment, you might have had three people in there, you know?
It's never going to be totally accurate.
No, it's not going to be totally accurate.
But I, I also has to, have to believe that this has been determined by other cities, municipalities, like they have calculation. I don't think we have to invent something from scratch. I think that we can potentially find out who, who else has looked at this and potentially adopt a similar model without starting over. I think that would be the simplest option. But that being said, I couldn't even tell you what anybody else has done.
Absolutely.
Well, your mind is in the same spot where mine was because I was just looking some things up about how tiered SDCs and those scaled SDCs are working elsewhere. And so this is, I'm looking at a memo right now, actually to the city of West Lynn dated March 13th of, from this year. And it said, so just to the Jermaine part, to help ensure SDCs correlate with dwelling size, the city can either tier SDCs by dwelling size or scale SDCs based directly on dwelling size. Dwelling size can be measured by, I'll skip that part. But for the multifamily housing section, it says scaled based on bedrooms. An example they give is city of Eugene. Tiered based on dwelling size, they say city of Portland. And then scaled based on dwelling size, square feet, they say city of King City. And so clearly this is something that is done in other cities and that we can look at because we're not going to, if we were to go this direction, we would not be the first to do it.
Right.
I mean, I think the, you know, if the, if the, if the, if the, the overall cost of the SDC is the concern, right? I think the methodology, I think we all agree is, is sound.
Yes.
In the model we want to use, right? So then it becomes, you know, we can't really assume more growth, right? That's based on, so it's, it's the capital list, right? So it's, it's, is there anything on that list that you want to take off, right? You can underfund your SDCs relative to the capital list, right? But it sounds like right now...
I don't.
We want to just kind of focus on the pool component of that total that makes up the total cost that gets then divided out amongst the future growth. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. So could we adopt the resolution with modifications that a tiered system be applied to, or should we come back?
I think it'd be cleaner to just come back and, and let us, let us put together a couple num, I think it'd be very simple to put in five million, zero, you know, you'll have nine, you'll have five, you'll have zero. And then we can look at, you know, what would be the, our recommendation on a, it sounds like bedroom would be preferred unless there's some re, something I'm missing and can't think of right at the moment.
Okay.
That sounds like a great idea to me.
Can I have a motion to continue this to our next regularly scheduled meeting?
I'm moved.
Is, is next scheduled meeting enough time?
Uh, July, so we would have a week, so probably have to come back to the second meeting in July.
Okay, second meeting in July.
Or...
Can you add that?
Yes, I'm moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue this particular item on resolution 25-19 to our meeting on the...
16th.
16th.
July.
Of July.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Might as well stay up here. Parks is next. Parks is still, it's all parks all day.
Next one, it's a second reading.
That's the tagline in the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so I...
All night.
Yes. So the next, so I said stay, you're, the next thing is the second reading of ordinance 251005 on parks. Parks master plan.
Please approve the second reading of the ordinance.
Yes. So anyway. Okay, item D is the second reading of ordinance number 251005, a legislative update to the Parks Master Plan, an ancillary document to the Oregon City 2040 Conference of Plan. I'm not going to read the file numbers. So staff, do you have anything to say that's, other than please approve the second reading?
We recommend approval.
Okay, all right. So let me open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing on the second reading of ordinance number 25-1005. I don't have anybody here signed up to speak on that particular item, so I will close the public hearing and ask for our attorney to, when we have a motion, to read, have the second reading. So is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 25-1005.
Second. Okay, we're all seconding it. Okay, go right ahead.
Ordinance number 25-1005, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City adopting the Parks Master Plan.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor McGriff.
Okay, that was fast.
Uh...
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, so items...
Tom and Scott, thank you both very much for all your work.
Thank you. Yay, we have a Parks Master Plan. An updated one. All right, so item C is the second reading of ordinance 25-1006, adopting LEG Legislative Package Number 25-05, Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Code Amendments.
Thank you. So we are recommending approval of the second reading of the proposed ordinance. I do want to turn it over to Ms. Richter.
Please.
We did talk about, you know, the option of trying to reduce the half mile walking distance to a quarter mile that was rejected by the state. So I just wanted to turn it over to Ms. Richter. We did follow up, okay, you know, what are our options now?
So before you start, so I won't say it was completely rejected. I would say that they said that they couldn't do anything about it, as staff. So that's how I read it.
Okay, so we, so we got a letter from the, the director of LCDC, uh, DLCD, excuse me, indicating that they could not adjust the distance. And Ms. Ryan and I looked into this a little bit further about what we could do with that director's decision. And it is possible that we might be able to appeal that decision rejecting the exemption to LCDC. It's not entirely clear that that is an appealable decision, but we could try. The deadline for filing that appeal would be Tuesday, June 24th. So we would file a letter notice appealing that decision to LCDC. So that would be one option. It may be that DLCD comes back and says, you can't appeal this. And then if they said that, our option would be to go to Circuit Court and file a, a request in other than contested case proceeding, which we probably would take a long time and cost a lot of money. They probably don't want to do that. But another option that, that would be an alternative to appealing the director's decision on Tuesday would be that on June 26th, DLCD has its next, or LCDC has its next meeting in Salem. And there is time set aside for items that are not on the agenda. And if somebody wanted to go down and talk to LCDC about the sort of one size fits all nature of the rules and the statute, that might be an opportunity to do so. That would be a little lower cost to the city and a little less risk and maybe an opportunity to build some bridges and have some conversations. So those are the two options that we've identified. One is appealing the director, deputy director's decision. If the decision, if the appeal was taken, then the matter would be heard by LCDC at a different meeting. There wouldn't be time to do it on the 25th or 26th or 27th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Well, must be that, you must have put some thoughts into my head because I called and asked for some advice on what opportunities would be available to the city to speak to the commission itself. And I was told that yes, their next meeting is on the 26th and 27th. And they usually put citizen comments at the end, which I think is not great, but there may be an option to change that. And then the next meeting after that is in Lakeview, which is not an option. So I was, let's just say, I was not discouraged from coming, but, not me personally, but the city from coming. The suggestion was is that maybe this needed to be heard. I would say that fundamentally, what we are, what we were asking for, and I guess I knew from the get-go that we sent a letter to the, to the staff and administratively, they prob, I was not expecting them to say, oh, yes. But I think there was some sympathy in terms of our attempts to be in compliance, but be more realistic about what the implications were of this. And I heard something very similar from the, the city of Happy Valley and the fact that they have a lot more hills and things than we do. And, you know, there's some of those places, I, I wouldn't walk a quarter mile to get to a bus in Happy Valley because you probably have some sort of coronary trying to get back up to some of those hills. But I think that we should probably move as I'm sure staff would like us to do to adopt this, but leave our options open because we can always change it. We can always come back and change it. I, I, I think that we have a good case. I really do. I think we are trying to be realistic. My thought on that quarter mile was trying to, I mean, I'd like it to be less than a quarter mile, but again, I, I was trying to take a middle road in my, in my thinking. It's not like we're saying hell no. We're saying, hey, it is a one size fits all. And I, I looked at this from many aspects of the jurisdictions that are, surround us. You know, we are not flat like Gladstone. We are certainly not like the city of Portland, which has a lot of transit and easily accessible transit. Our transit sucks. I mean, you know, I've, I've told my friends at Troy Met this, I says, nothing gets you personally, it's just, it, 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 it doesn't work. And my, my whole objection to this was, we have the cart before the horse. We don't have the transit in place to really make this meaningful and work. We're doing it first without having that. And I would just heard a conversation today about buses on Highway 43 that were going through and were empty. And I said, well, this community also has the same sort of constraints that we do in terms of transit access. And then, you know, at 2:30, you go from Mary's Woods all the way to 205 and it's just one whole line of cars because people are just not going to get out of their cars to take a bus when there is no available service to get them where they actually need to go. And that's, that's been the whole, you know, that's been the whole problem all along. So I would like us to try and talk to the commission. Because I think that from back in the day, more cities, more cities and citizens appear before their meetings. And I, I know that in, in lately, nobody shows up to these things. And I think they need, I think they need to hear more from people who are, who have the boots on the ground and how this actually affects communities. Because I don't think when they put this together, that was one of the things that they did. They didn't really listen to see how this would work. They, they have that Portland view, oh, everybody has the same transit like that, so we can do this and it's great. And it's not.
So we know that it will be on the 27th of June and it's item 14 and the time certain start, which could be, means it could be later than that, is 3:30. I don't know if there's a Zoom option, but it is in Salem.
Yes, I know it is.
I would think there's a Zoom option.
I mean, if the commission would be, I mean, yeah, staff, you know, recommend we, we address the ordinance first.
Yes, absolutely.
And then we can make a second motion regarding the, what to do next, if anything.
I, I don't have any problem with that. But I was suggesting we go ahead and adopt whatever we have to adopt.
It'd be cleaner.
And then we look, I mean, we, we, we need to be heard is what I, what I feel very strongly about. We need to be heard.
Well, and, but as you have said, and, and I agree when you say this, being heard doesn't mean we get what we want.
No, I, I totally understand that.
And I appreciate wanting to push this as far as we can. But at a certain point, it, in my mind, it just becomes a waste of resources because I feel pretty confident about what it's going to be. My personal reading of the letter from Director Bateman was not ambiguous at all. She cited the Oregon Administrative Rules that would allow an exemption and we clearly do not fall under those categories. So I don't see how we can make an argument to LCDC, like, we don't like this, please, despite the administrative rules, let us do something different. My only hope in passing this is, again, that the market will still incentivize developers to include those parking spots because it's something that this community needs because, because of our unique topography. But also if we don't adopt it, the deadline is coming soon and the model ordinances are going to go into place, in which case it's going to be the maximalist version of, of this policy, so.
I don't like it, but to move things forward, I'll move to approve the second reading over, of ordinance 25-1006.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's have a, just reading.
Ordinance number 25-1006, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City amending Title 17 zoning of the Oregon City Municipal Code to implement parking reforms required under the Transportation Planning Rule, Oregon Administrative Rules, OAR 660-012-0400 through 0450 and OAR 660120630.
Before we have the vote, did we open and close a public hearing for this?
I opened it, I didn't close it, so, close it. I'll open it again and I'll close it.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor McGriff.
No.
Motion passes.
So I would like to, I would like to suggest that we speak to DLCD. It's been a long time for me personally since I've been before them, but you know, what the hell?
LCDC?
DLC, yeah. LCDC, yes, the commission.
Okay, so if, I, I don't have a problem if you would like to go to their next meeting and provide comment.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I...
That's all I'm asking for.
That sounds fine to me. I, I agree with Commissioner Marl. I think if that doesn't go anywhere, I think it's probably the end of it because to start going down legal proceedings and, and that cost, we're, I mean, it's the rule and, and just like before, you know, as you well know, planning commission can't make a decision, we don't like it. Now we're asking for, we don't like it when, when the rule's been adopted. Now we're asking for, we don't like it when, when the rule's been adopted. So I, I, I think it's, I have no problem with, with you giving it your best, but I'm, I'm going to be real reluctant to go further than that.
Yep, I wasn't asking for anything further than that.
Yep, just state your opinion.
Yep, thank you.
And I guess if the commission does, I just want to, I mean, I would assume staff would help as well, either in drafting or, or do you not want staff involved in, I mean, I was, I was under the impression that if the commission sends us down, that we would, you know, utilize all of our resources to make the best argument we could.
I think, you know, Melissa's letters.
Well, I, I, so I think that we wouldn't be, I don't think the case to be made would be that we're gonna, we want to violate the rule or we want to, we want the rule to be changed, right? The rule needs to accommodate unique circumstances like Oregon City's and that it is a one-size-fits-all situation.
Yeah, and we're not the, we're not the only one.
Um, and so I think, you know, if the commission is supportive of, of sending the mayor and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to help work with drafting testimony or we could send somebody from our office or Tony could send someone, um, you know, whatever, whatever the commission is, is comfortable with, but I think we need a consensus vote on that.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that, um, you know, that the letter we sent was, um, was, you know, was pretty straightforward. I, I thought that Director Bateman's letter, um, was interesting in the fact that I do not have the authority to grant an exemption to the city of Oregon City, period. So she says, therefore I deny the request. It's like, we can make the request. She said she can't, she can't grant it. That, you know, I get that, but anyway. So I will, I will work with the city manager to figure out something that is cost-effective for us to, um, approach this. My feeling is if we, if we don't speak out, then they go merrily along their way and who knows what the next thing is that that's going to try to happen. Because I know it's coming.
They're already doing the next thing that's.
I know they are, and that's what bothers me.
And we are talking to them.
Yes. Well, the league is talking to them in general, but the league, the one thing I talked to our, our lobbyist, I said, you just, it's always in generalities. We don't talk about the individual situations that cities are facing, you know? And the more that I'm, that I do, that I'm working in this position, the more I really realize that many of my colleagues on the state level don't get down to looking at how this generally impacts jurisdictions. They just don't think about that. If, if, if they do think about it, it gets really dismissed quite easily. And it has been very apparent to me, uh, when I read these things, that that's, that's part of the issue. So anyway, let's move on. We have some exciting things under item nine A and B. So nine, general business, city-sponsored event program.
Good evening, commissioners. James Graham here, Oregon City, Economic Development Manager of the, of Oregon City. Tonight we have one application for the city-sponsored public event program. And this would be round two of the 2024-25 budget allocation for this initiative. Tonight we have, um, applying Oregon City Porch Fest main stage event. This event will take place on August 9th and August, I mean, August 8th and August 9th on the grounds of the Pioneer Center. The funding request is $11,496,000, $11,496 dollars. And the maximum, of course, would be $12,000 under this program. Tonight we have presenting, uh, their, um, their application is Mandy Dexter. And if you would come up and have a seat and.
Um, hang on just a second. So we may have some questions to staff, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions of staff? So I was just look, I was going back over your staff report, which was very thorough. So we did round one and then we did, when did we start round? I was looking for this in the staff report. When did we start round two?
We started round two on, um, March 27th.
Okay, or is that the April 2nd date?
We started, we started round two on March 27th.
Okay, so the one question I did have, not more, not just one, so if we approve this is, is, do we have any time constraint? Because sometimes we get told, oh, we have to spend the money by June 30th if it's coming up. Is this crossing budget years? Since the event is not, is happening in the next budget cycle.
This event is happening, yes, right, the next budget cycle, but the money is available.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Is this the only application you received in round two?
It's the only one we.
This, yes, this is the only applicant, no, this is not the only application we received in round two. The other one just fell off. Didn't go forward.
The other one what?
The other one did not go forward for, for different reasons. But this one made the, the process.
They did not submit, they just did not move, move it forward.
They did not move forward.
So there was possibly an inquiry and then that was kind of the end of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, please come up now. And you might want to, um, I, I was loving, loved the fact that you talked about the methodology and do you have some stats on the, the survey from last year? I knew you did. Okay, yes. Make sure the green button's on. Make sure the green button's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'll just move it a little closer. You don't have to lean in so far.
All right, usually I'm on the other side, so. Uh, good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for allowing me to come in and present about Oregon City Porch Fest to you. I recognize some of you last year when we, uh, from last year when we went forward with a community enhancement grant. Just want to thank you for, um, your support last year of our, of the event. Um, and thank you again for the opportunity to share tonight. 2025 is going to be the third annual Oregon City Porch Fest. Um, we've, uh, put this together the last three years. The first year was, uh, kind of, uh, last minute. We were awarded a small grant from the Oregon City Arts Commission. We were able to throw together a very grassroots, organic little event that was incredibly well-received by the community of Oregon City and that prompted us to continue for a second year where we asked for a community enhancement grant and were awarded that funding by the city of Oregon City. Um, and, and also quite a, a large amount of volunteers began to come forward. And so we were able to, um, increase the scope of the event and bring in a main stage location. And so this year, um, and, and last year when we did go out for that grant, we, um, we promised that we wouldn't need as much money this year and we are, um, keeping good on that promise. Um, we're asking for quite a, quite a bit less, uh, uh, funding from the city because we have had a lot of community partners, um, who want to be part of Oregon City Porch Fest as well. So yeah, like I said, it's a growing event. We've become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation and, um, there is a lot of momentum behind this event. It started out as a community event and it's growing into, um, an attraction, a regional attraction. So let's see if this works like the one I have at my work. Yeah, there we go. Okay. What is Porch Fest? Um, I, um, I guess I'm going to read these bullets too, even though that's really annoying and it bothers me, but, um, they're short, I promise. And I will add my own dialogue as well. So it is a unique music festival. It's a free music festival that's centered around a main stage. This year we'll be holding the main stage at the Pioneer Center. We've been working with, um, Taylor at the Pioneer Center to set that up. There will be a main stage, there will be vendors, um, food, beer garden, um, that we're working in conjunction with Archbridge Tap Room.
Is that inside or outside?
Tap House, outside, outside, yes. Um, and outside of that main stage, which is what we're, what we're asking the city to help fund, um, there are also stages that are on porches, lawns, driveways, parking lots, and they're at people's homes and also businesses in the McLaughlin neighborhood. It's community-led, it's grassroots event organized mainly by, by volunteers and it welcomes the neighbors and tourists to Oregon's hometown. It's free and accessible, there's no entry fee, anyone can attend. And it is family-friendly, so all ages, it's relaxed and welcoming. Um, and like I said, it's a, um, what we're asking the city to help with is the, the main stage location at the Pioneer Center. That is the epicenter of Porch Fest, um, and it is on, in, um, public space at the Pioneer Center. Um, so, uh, the spirit of Porch Fest, and if you look carefully at that picture, you can see me singing backup vocals there. That was during the first Porch Fest. Um, so we're, uh, Porch Fest attracts local performers, uh, and also performers that are not so local. This year we have performers coming in from Salem and Eugene and, um, lots of different places around the metro area. Uh, but we also have a lot of homegrown talent too that will be participating. Um, and it gives artists a unique opportunity because, uh, they do not have to reach out to venues, they, uh, they can perform on, um, porches and, uh, get, gain exposure. So it's really great for, um, performers that are not, uh, that don't have those opportunities to, to play out in other places. Also, it puts our public spaces on display, um, whether they're transformed into venues, um, as well as our businesses, and that attracts visitors to discover new places around the city, around the, uh, McLaughlin area, um, and connects tourists during the event to businesses and landmarks, encouraging return visits. Um, and community members also can connect with those businesses and other resources in the neighborhood. Um, and we do, uh, financially compensate artists for their work during Porch Fest. So we are supporting, uh, local artists as well as artists that are not quite so local. Um, so yeah, like I said, it started as a community event. It's rapidly becoming a tourism event and attracts many visitors from outside of Oregon City. Uh, and this year and, and last year, but, uh, more so this year, uh, businesses are seeking out partnership with us because of the momentum of the event in and out of the Oregon City area. Um, so Oregon City Porch Fest quickly becoming a beloved community event. It makes Oregon City residents and visitors alike feel welcomed to Oregon's hometown. And I think that some of the stuff on here is a little redundant, so we'll just continue. Um, here's some data from our survey last year. We took a survey of attendees and you can see, uh, where attendees came from. We asked them for their zip code. So about 64% of attendees are, um, coming from Oregon City and, uh, about 36% are coming from other areas, mainly Portland. Um, the dark blue on there doesn't have a label, but that is Washington County. And the very skinny purple area there is, um, other towns in Oregon that are not specifically listed out. So we're about 640 right now. We are anticipating that a higher percentage will be coming from outside of Oregon City this year. Uh, we, uh, just wanted to briefly share a marketing plan with, uh, the commission. This year we have also partnered with Three Rivers Artists Guild for marketing because our events are on the same weekend. Um, so in conjunction with Three Rivers Artists Guild, we'll be, um, having billboard, there will be a billboard in Oregon City, but another on I-205. We'll be doing some radio promotion, um, on Caboo and Shady Pines. We'll have print in Willamette Week, Portland Mercury. We do have a fairly strategic, um, social media campaign. Um, and so we'll be targeting, um, arts and music enthusiasts within 150-mile radius of Oregon City. We do send out weekly press releases. Last year we were not successful with getting any television interviews, but we're hoping that we will this year. Um, we do have a mailer campaign and, um, we do put up posters, but those are mostly in Oregon City. And these are, um, our community partners that are partnering with us this year. We do, um, we did just have the Hype Social come on board today, so I, their logo is not included, but, um, yeah, these are our community partners so far this year. Um, and at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners might have about Oregon City Porch Fest.
There is a staff review.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, with this event, um, staff is always concerned about, um, uh, event organizers when they give themselves a short period of time to turn a project around and, and not have a sufficient amount of revenue raised. Now, there may be an update, which we, at the time of this application, we noticed that, uh, revenue identified was, uh, the Mount Hood Territory that I, I understand it was already received. Clackamas, uh, Community College, they received $3,500. Uh, they're asking from the city, $11,496. And then there are other grants, other sponsors and other merchandise, uh, projections sought under this program. So the total projected, total, the total projected revenue is a little over $39,000. And the total expenditure for the project is also, is very close, is also $39,000 with a very, a small net, um, uh, net figure, net income. In regard to other program criteria, um, the event organizers have indicated that they will not charge for admission. Uh, they've also indicated that, uh, well, this is the first time that they've applied to this program, but the event organizers do have the prerequisite insurance coverage and the Pioneer Center has granted approval to use the facility. Uh, in terms of methodology that helps to substantiate estimated visitor attendance and levels and, uh, attendance levels and origin, uh, the event organizers state that they will be conducting surveys of those attending as well as obtain cell numbers from vendors and merchandise booths. Now, um, the program organizers state that at the time of this, uh, application, they had 10 vendors, but expect more, so there probably is an update from that point of view. The event organizers will be utilizing the following media outlets to get the word out, uh, billboard, print media, social media, yard signage, local businesses, radio and mailers. Um, the event, uh, we, as always, we require them to use, uh, the, uh, Welcome Home logo, tourism logo and tagline, but there was no indication in the application how specifically they would use, uh, that logo and tagline. So therefore, our recommendation is that if the application is approved, it's recommended that the approval be continued upon the use of a travel organcy logo and tagline as well as assurances that the event organizers will cover all costs incurred and that all obligations to creditors will be set aside.
I thought that it was a given that when we give a city-sponsored grant, that the logo is automatic. You, you get our money, you get the logo. So that, that, I just assumed that. I, I didn't want to assume if that's, that's incorrect, but I, it's been on everything that we've approved.
We are more than happy to include the logo on anything.
Well, I think he's probably saying everything, so.
Everything. All things.
Yeah, all things.
Well, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the work that goes into making this happen. I really enjoyed it the last couple of years that it's happened, um, and I just think it's a great event. Um, the only concern that I have that I wanted to bring up is just as it relates to neighborhood impact. So I'm, I recall to last year, um, I know that we received a couple of emails from people who, who did not appreciate it in, in the residential area and, uh, we do have our sound code, so I don't know if.
Noise ordinance.
Noi, yes, noise ordinance. Um, so I don't know if this was even something that we could have enforced if everything was happening before those hours had, uh, approached. Um, but then I also remember from last summer, um, I think you were there as well, at the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, there was someone who, um, there were several people who came and had concerns, um, because there was some sort of house party that happened, um, around the Fourth of July, uh, that was somehow connected to someone or someone connected to Porch Fest. I was sent, uh, a 1:00 AM voice memo recording of, uh, someone who may have been inebriated singing Bohemian Rhapsody, um, and so my concern.
I got that one too.
And so while I, I know that's probably not connected to Porch Fest. And so, while I know that's probably not connected to Porch Fest, it was said that it was connected to someone who is connected to Porch Fest. And I didn't want people to get the impression that it was something connected to what the city was funding. So, I don't know if you can speak to that at all. I know that's just kind of a lot that I threw out there. But I think that this is a great program, and I just want to make sure that we're taking into account the neighborhood impact that we've heard from people. But we do have our noise ordinance, and as long as it doesn't go past that hour, then I don't see a problem at all.
Sure, absolutely.
If you want to hang on, I have one to add, too. So, yes, I totally agree with what you said about the event. I did, as a citizen, participate. I didn't have a porch, but I had my driveway. And I had an artist there that was acoustic as opposed to using amplification. So, my concern would be the same as yours, is that the Pioneer Community Center is completely, as you know, we were in the same neighborhood, is completely surrounded by residential occupancies. Plus, we have firefighters in the fire station who are going to need some sleep and rest and all that. So, I think we need to add a condition regarding the city's hours and in terms of, you know, having it shut down. And we need to be very cognizant, and we need to let the vendors, and not the vendors, but the musicians, know this as well. I don't know how many are going to be amplified, but I think that that has to be taken into consideration because the noise does carry. And I think I told you all a story about something going on at Singer Hill Cafe that I could hear it in my house with the TV on, and it was like the band was in my living room. But that's much closer than this is. So, I think that's something we need to be very cognizant of because I think everybody enjoys this. I certainly had a great time. I met a really nice person who was the musician. But I think, again, outside and that amplification, plus you've got noise bouncing off the church. And, you know, we just want to be cognizant of the fact that we can enjoy ourselves. But that, and I think is it 10 o'clock? Yeah. So, I think we have to add that, I think, and probably should if it involves any music. We need to add that on future applications as a condition. Just, again, the McLaughlin neighborhood is amazing, you know, and we do have residential folks. But I think, I want to commend you on your application and the thoroughness of it. And I would say the only thing, so he asked about a couple of things. So, he said you had X many vendors. So, you have how many now?
I, you know, actually, I don't know.
He said you had tenant applications, but you have more than that now.
We've added a few.
Right, so you have more. And then what was the other one that you wanted an update on?
Well, as always.
Yeah, we got the logo in there already, yeah.
Yes, just to make sure that all costs are covered.
Right, we got that, yeah, we got that. I just thought you had another question. I was writing in the margins here. So, I think it's an appropriate use of funding, and, you know, it's going to be a lot of fun.
If I may speak to the noise, we're finished at 9:00. So, we're finished at 9:00.
Oh, 9:00.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's when the last performer should be wrapping up. And the other part of the noise, you know, and we did receive one complaint. It's funny, the people who complain are usually the loudest. But in our survey, we got so much positive feedback from the community. But one thing that we do to alleviate some of that tension within the community is that we give all of the porch hosts door hangers so they can write when and where the music will be happening. And then they take them around to their neighbors so that everyone's well aware. The intention is to invite, but also to warn.
Yeah, well, to notify. I would not say warn, I would say notify. And I did mine, I did the entire block around my house with my Porch Fest door hangers.
So that it's not a surprise for anybody.
So, it's a notice.
So, I want to preface, I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. This is such a fun event. Like, I really appreciate it. I just want to ask, these are razor-thin margins, really, that you're operating on. And just doing some quick math, at the time of the staff review, it's about $20,000 in pending money. I just want to ask, kind of, what's the plan if some of this falls through? How can you ensure everybody gets paid?
Right, okay. Well, we do have Subaru, who has just come onboard to help with some funding, with sponsorship. But in addition to that, we do have some areas where we can cut if we need to. Yeah, and continuing to wait on some of our past sponsors. But we do have other sponsorships in the works.
Thank you.
Rocky.
I think I've missed the last couple. I'll be in town that weekend this year, so I'm super excited about it.
And we do need more hosts, so Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Smith. Looking at you.
Like I said, if I wasn't doing the garage sale the night, the day after the, it's like, I just about, I enjoyed it, but I just about lost my mind. I was so exhausted. Anything, Mr. Mitchell?
Just, like Commissioner Smith, I've missed it, and I hope I can attend this year. I've heard nothing but good things about it, and thank you for doing it.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Wilson, are you going to do the honors?
I am going to do the honors, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're so welcome. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the funding for a Porch Fest event.
With the provisions?
With the provisions of including the staff, or sorry, the city logo.
Second. And we already know that they're going to end at 9:00, so the noise code, hopefully, nobody will have to call, please. Okay, so how about roll call, please?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I hope that you don't mind, but I need a break right now. So, can we break for about six minutes? And then we will come back to my second favorite topic of the night, which is Bird Band. She did. The evening. Thank you so much, Chief Davis. Take it away.
Mayor, Commission, good evening. Tonight, before you has ordinance 25-1009, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City to revise the city code by adding municipal code chapter 8.23 outdoor burning, also declared an emergency. This ordinance proposes the adoption of municipal code to establish clear and forcible regulations governing outdoor burning within the city. The primary objective is to enhance public health and safety, protect property, reduce the risk of wildfires, air pollution, and nuisance complaints associated with uncontrolled and illegal burning activities. A little bit of background, the city of Oregon City currently does not have a city ordinance and municipal code that regulates or prohibits certain types of outdoor burning activities. Other cities around us do. The only regulation in place is our through DEQ and Clackamas Fire. Over the past several years, the police department and code enforcement have encountered an increasing number of illegal and potentially dangerous fires that are occurring on public property and private property. As I mentioned, staff currently do not have an enforcement mechanism for these fires unless property is damaged as a result of the fire. Then it will become a crime under Oregon revised statute. Those crimes are reckless burning, arson 1 and 2. I have some examples of cases that we investigated, sent to the city attorney over the last several years, and we were not able to, there was no enforcement mechanism because there was no property damage, although they were very dangerous fires, and we're lucky that no property was damaged. Adding a new city ordinance to regulate outdoor burning consistent with DEQ and Clackamas Fire, outdoor burning regulations is essential, as I mentioned, to protect public health, safety, and property within our city. As you know, and we see around our area, including the gorge currently, uncontrolled and illegal outdoor burning activities create a substantial risk to safety, can lead to wildfires, can damage property. Interestingly, we're kind of in somewhat Happy Valley. A small section of the south end of our city falls in within the DEQ seasonal burning activities. Historically, this area has been rural with larger parcels of land. However, in the last 20 or 30 years, that area has seen considerable residential development. This ordinance is very similar to Happy Valley's. Some of the language is actually from Happy Valley's. We worked with a fire marshal, Sean Olson, Clackamas County Fire Marshal Sean Olson, and Division Fire Chief for Clackamas Fire, Doug Whitley. And they acknowledged our process, and they supported us using the same process as Happy Valley. With that, we also have worked with the city attorney to make sure everything was legal there. With this ordinance, we're also bringing forward that besides the establishment of clear and forcible regulations, we're also bringing a permit process forward, which is in your handout packets. Code enforcement manager Ryan Kersey has gone through that, created the regulations, the permit process. Initially, we're considering that area to have one acre minimum before you can get an outdoor burning permit within the city. And then we also proposed a $30 application fee for that. So, with that, I put some related links in there.
Why is it $30? That seems awfully low.
We want it to be fair and consistent with jurisdictions around us. That's the fees up to the city commission. It was just what we threw out there, so with that. And also, we brought it forward as an emergency just because of the immediate dangers that outdoor burning creates. We see that, and we want to preserve the health and safety of our community. And in there, there's some packet materials for you guys to preview.
So, is our rule more. So is our, is our rule more stringent than DEQ's? Because I don't think too much of what their rules are. They don't seem to do. It appears when you call the hotline, you don't get any response whatsoever. And by the time they get back to you, whatever it was, was happening is already over.
Yeah, so this ordinance and the regulations are drafted around not only Clackamas Fire, but DEQ's regulations. And then it allows us to have an enforcement tool locally here that we can cite into our municipal court. Whereas currently, we only have a, kind of a dense smoke ordinance on the current municipal code. And then we do cover other regulations in the ordinance that's mentioned. So if they're burning illegal materials, construction debris, food waste, those kind of things, those are also enforceable in the same burning ordinance.
And they're listed in DEQ. Clackamas Fire basically lists the same materials.
Is there any materials that we are missing that should be included in this? Do you have, and any others determined by, that's dangerous or whatever?
I think everything is listed and submitted for your review. Part of the application process the chief spoke about was really making that determination to have an outdoor burn, which consists of basically a pile, no bigger than 10 by 10 by 10. And it's something that, based on the application and regulations, the city code enforcement staff would have to come out and inspect that pile pre-burn. And then having a minimum of one acre would give you much more defensible space, wouldn't smoke out the neighbors. The way DEQ has their current map, that little section from the high school down to the southern city border, can now currently burn without a permit because we don't have a process in place. So anybody in that entire neighborhood can have an outdoor burn, separate from like your religious or inside of like, you know, something you're going to have on your patio. These are just more of like burning yard debris piles, so.
We left the ordinance to us, DEQ listed materials, right? If they change things, right? We don't want to handcuff ourselves to some materials and maybe they add different ones later. So we kind of keep to what DEQ is going to regulate.
Well, just for the record, why don't you just go over what that is?
Can you pull that up?
Please.
It'll take a second.
Are you, are you talking about the list of materials?
Yeah, that's right. I know you don't have human remains on here.
Garbage? Are you talking about the, the list?
Yes.
Should be listed on the outdoor burning regulations, rules and fees document.
You want me to read the list?
It's on there. Please.
Garbage, plastic, wire insulation, automobile parts, asphalt, petroleum products, petroleum treated material, rubber products, animal remains, animal or vegetable matter resulting from handling, preparation, cooking, or service of food, or any material which normally emits dense smoke or noxious odors.
Well, that kind of covers all of the above. Yeah, I, I just personally don't want anybody burned, nobody in Oregon City who lives in a neighborhood should be burning anything. I mean, other than if they have a little fire pit. But, you know, people, I don't know what they think, but it's a health hazard to, you know, to be doing that. And matter of fact, you know, the only parcel I can think of, you know, that I go by on a regular basis is next to Chapin Park where they have a tree farm, and that's more than an acre. I would be concerned, even if they meet that acre requirement, they're right next to the park.
They don't fall within that burning permit area.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I would, you know, I don't think they would do it, but you know, that's, that's a big acreage right there in the city. And just given some of the, you know, the burning on the promenade that happened a few years ago, and just, you know, I just.
And we're seeing these, and it's, it's, it's just an enforcement tool for us to control some of these fires that we're seeing that we haven't been able to before. And also give a permitting process to the, to the residents that are in that process, in that area that can burn under specific guidelines.
Are we covering our costs?
Okay. So I mean, just, I, just out of curiosity, is, you know, we're, we're talking about like a permit system for burns?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Could we just say, we don't want burning at all?
I don't think.
So I think without, like maybe let the attorney speak, Ms. Richter, but I think with DEQ's current process and area, they allow seasonal burning in that one little tiny area of the city. The rest of the city is no burning, outdoor burning, except for your personal burns.
So I don't, I don't know the answer to that with respect to DEQ's little area. That they, they may, it may be that in farming communities, they're allowed, you know, rural areas are allowed to burn yard debris. I mean, so I'd need to look into that to get back to you to know for sure.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I'm just curious, because if we can enforce a permit, you know, is it?
Happy Valley is the most comparable city that we're following. They have the same type of stuff where they have seasonal burning areas within Happy Valley that they allow this. They have since moved that to one acre parcels, right? Just to protect the other residents around there. So we're, we're trying not to reinvent the wheel, but we're trying to follow stuff that Clackamas Fire already supports with Happy Valley. So that's kind of why we went that route.
If it was in your, I, I did read the gap. I was looking to see what other, were you saying that we're trying to keep our burning comparable other states?
Happy Valley's is $30, right?
Yes. The Happy Valley one charges $30 also, and it's per burn season, per application. So the way we looked at it with our map, an area that, you know, has the ability to outdoor burn, and if we have the one acre minimum as part of the regulations, there's fewer than 10 properties that would even be able to apply for it in the city. So we just want to keep it comparable. It's something, you know, safety wise, we would go out and just look at the pile prior, probably be a 15 minute visit by staff. And then if there's any, you know, follow up where maybe something's burned illegally, we would respond, or the police department would respond. If there's something that gets out of control, the fire department would respond. And I think Chief Brown from the fire district is pretty active about charging for some of those things when, you know, people burn stuff they shouldn't or when it gets out of control.
I think as far, I heard staff time, are we recruiting that? We already have staff working.
Right, yes.
So it's just going to be part of their response if we do get a permit.
So we are this is going to be very delicate. So how are we going to determine what a religious ceremony is, or whatever we, whatever, we didn't say religious ceremony, but for religious purposes. I mean, that's subjective. It's like people saying, I have a service dog.
Yeah, it has to be contained in some sort of capacity. So a chimenea, fire pit, those kind of things. It can't just be an outdoor burn pile as part of the regulations we have listed, so.
On my right?
So yeah, the question I asked before was similar to that is, we, in my lifetime, I remember a couple occasions where we've had events, whether it's a salmon bake, or whether it's a, an encampment, or a living history event where you may have a fire pit or something in a city park for an event. I think that should be considered and permitted. We still have an actual, I wasn't sure if it was still there, but there is a fire pit sitting right in the center of the park at the end of the Oregon Trail for events like that. So those are things I would consider. And the two other things I wanted to mention was that Chuck Norris can start a fire with an ice cube. And also that Chuck Norris can make a stick by rubbing two fires together.
I think that's very relevant and important. And we want to make sure that we are cognizant of that because we don't want to get involved with any thing that Mr. Norris might be up to because that would be detrimental to our staff and ourselves. Yes, Mr. Morrow?
Could you help me understand in section D, number four? So outdoor burning or fires are not permitted except as provided in subsection C during any declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the city or fire chief? When it's cross referencing to subsection C where it says that outdoor fires may be allowed, when the person first obtains an outdoor burning permit from the city, and then it goes on to the complying with the requirements of the city Clackamas Fire District Office, of the state fire marshal, and DEQ? Why would the sub four not just say during any declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the city or fire chief?
The last, so the last several declarations, at least the last one that Clackamas Fire did, still allowed recreational burning.
I don't know what that, what is that?
They did, they stopped their permitting process, they stopped their seasonal burning. So what four is, is basically saying if there's an emergency declaration, C is not going to be valid, right? And we have that in there that we will work with the permit holder if they have one, that they can't burn on that day, and then we'll reissue it for a day that's permitted. But unless the fire marshal changes B, that they've allowed to be in every fire declaration or extreme fire danger, so.
So yeah, that makes sense to me. It's just the way that I read it, it seemed to be the opposite.
It did to me, too.
Because, because what it says is outdoor burning or fires are not permitted except as provided in subsection C. And subsection C says outdoor fires when a person first obtains an outdoor permit.
It's the way it's written. It should say during any declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the fire chief, except as provided, because we're starting, you know, let's do our English, starting with a prepositional phrase with no subject. So I, I would just reword that. I know what you're trying to say, but.
So to me, the way that I read it was, all of these instances are not permitted except as provided in this section where it is permitted when you get the permit from the city. So I, maybe I was misreading it.
No, I don't. I'm, I'm curious how our city attorney reads it.
That was language from the city attorney's office, so I'll let them explain that.
There you go. Referral, referral.
So, so Chief Davis did ask me about how I interpreted this provision, and I interpret it to mean that if you have a permit, you can burn, except when the fire marshal says you can't. And then your permit is, your permit is suspended. If you want to reverse it so that outdoor burning fires is not permitted, and then the colon, and then it says in sub four, during any declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the city or fire chief, except as provided in subsection C, that doesn't work. Because that says, that says you get to burn if you have a permit, even if it is extreme fire danger. And that's not, doesn't work.
Well, that's how I read it as it is currently.
Well, if it's, why don't we just say that if there's extreme fire danger?
You just can't.
You can't.
Right? That's, that's what I was wondering, because what you just said, if we were to add it at the end, is how I interpreted it as it is now.
Yeah, because we don't want them to be doing anything during extreme fire danger. So why don't we just say that outdoor burning is not permitted if there is a declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the chief or the fire chief, period.
And then we put a comma after that, including any permits authorized in subsection C.
Right, that would be much clearer.
Yeah, because the word that's used is except.
Except, yeah, yeah, and that always throws people off. Yeah, you, you read it.
Okay, do you want me to read it again so you can hear it together?
Sure.
Okay, so subsection D will say outdoor burning or fires are not permitted. And then subsection four, it'll say in any type of a burn barrel, on commercial property, on public lands or parks, in any declarat, during any declaration of extreme fire danger issued by the city or the fire chief, including any permits authorized in subsection C.
Why are we excluding residential properties? Because you have commercials, called out commercials. What about industrial properties?
Because if you look at A, B and C are the only allowed burning.
Right.
D is just explaining more of what is not permitted or allowed. So B and C in this whole thing are the only things that are allowed.
So you can have a grill.
Permit or recreational burn on private property with.
Ceremony, my.
Permission.
So my other question is, is about compliance. I really don't think you should give anybody any leeway. If they're burning illegally, they should get fined on the spot. They don't get to put it out and go, oh, I'm sorry, I'm never going to do it again. They should, boom, that's it. It should not be burning, period. I would just wish we'd just say, no, you can't have any burning. Is that in our wheelhouse?
No.
I would, I would.
No?
I'm always very careful, right? Our officers and code enforcement are very well trained, right? And they, they want voluntary compliance, but also they want a safe community. So they treat each situation individually, they look at that, they try to understand what's going on. Some people may not entirely know, and a warning is exactly what we need for voluntary compliance and for that to comply forever, right? Some people might need a citation. That we need to leave to our staff's discretion when they go and they respond. I think it's, I think it's super important for that.
I understand, I just don't think there's any excuse anybody has for burning anything on their property, and I'm really vehement about it, period. You know, we're, we're not out in, out in the sticks somewhere.
So could the commission vote? I mean, we do voluntary compliance across the board on everything that we do. Whether it's traffic stop.
We're too nice.
Noise violent, not, no, it's building community support and addressing situations, and the officers have to have the discretion. If you're decent about it, you apologize, oh my gosh, I didn't know, we move on, right? If it's the fourth time, it's the second, third, fourth time, they're going to get a ticket. I mean, this is about building a safe community and building relationships with our community members.
We can't anticipate every potential instance where our officers are going to go out, and specifically as it relates to their own personal safety. And so I, I mean, we don't do this for anything else.
Yeah, anyway, so do we have a motion?
No, hang on.
Oh, you have more questions?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. Where we, sort of where we just were. Section G, outdoor burning or fires are not permitted on commercial property. Does that mean if I have a restaurant and I have a grill outside, I can't do that?
Those would still be allowed. The commercial property fires are for larger piles, burning up debris, those kind of things. So similar to what you're saying, several restaurants, other places around town, they'll have things, especially during the fall, they'll have wood in a little burner, those kind of things to keep people warm. Those, those would be allowed. The commercial burning is for overall piles, addressing those things.
So what about industrial properties? You call out, I said, I asked before, you call out commercial property, what about industrial properties?
I mean, we can add language to it. I mean, I would, I would feel the industrial would fall under commercial, but we're not listing each zoning now.
Well, commercial and industrial are not the same.
Could just say non-residential.
That would be an easier way. I know that there is a business that every year they have their grill sitting out on the city sidewalk, and it's, believe me, it's, it's, it's hot. And I'm like, I wonder if they have a permit to have a hot object like that sitting in the public right of way.
I've got one other question. On outdoor burning rules and fees, the second, well, the first and the second bullet points mention allowable burn hours, but I didn't see burn hours anywhere.
Those are all handled through DEQ and the fire district on a daily basis. Similar to the last couple weeks, they actually disallowed it based on the weather conditions. So every day, anybody that has a permit has to call into the burn line, which is hosted by the fire district here in Clackamas County, and they give the hours based on the daily conditions. So they would say, burning's allowed from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., no flames after 2 p.m., no smoke after 5 p.m. So they get very prescriptive, but it's a daily basis. Yeah.
On that section, Mike, did it reference back to where the number is that you call? I know it's in here several places I saw that, but.
Yeah, the number, the number is there, but I, I didn't realize that the hours were variable based on what DEQ decides. I thought they were set hours, and then they'd say yes or no for the day. I didn't realize it was this bike, it was Apple.
Um, these don't, unfortunately, these don't have pages, so I don't know where you're reading the hours part.
It's on page two of the outdoor burning rules.
Okay. Okay.
At the very bottom of the page.
And it's also listed at the top of outdoor burning rules and fees.
Called 742, okay. All right, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I got one question for Commissioner Smith, asked about permitted. Like, do we want to add something in there that if it's a city permitted event? Or how do we want to tackle that?
Oh, I don't.
Well, you want to ban salmon bakes in Oregon City? I mean, is that any different than, I mean, I think that's different than having a grill at a restaurant. I mean, if this...
On the sidewalk. Wouldn't that be covered by...
But I feel that's more of a recreational...
I think it would be, but I just want to make sure. But if it's in a city park or something...
I think, I think that they would argue it's ceremonial.
Absolutely, they would.
I would agree.
I just wanted to make sure there's a venue for, I mean...
There could be non-religious groups that want to do something on that line, and we've said outdoor burning's not permitted in parks.
Well, that's why I brought it up twice.
Yeah.
We have a fire pit in our city park, so wouldn't that mean we could have a fire in it at some point or some process for it?
I thought we had some grills in some of the, I know there's one, there's a grill in Chapin.
There used to be, I'm not sure anymore.
There's grills in Chapin because we used it last year for a picnic.
I know we reviewed the park rules when we looked at this and created this, and I think parks had informed us they're working on updating their park rules, so maybe it would be one thing to be included, or keep it as it is with no outdoor burning, open flames.
On public lands. They have to, what's the word I want? They have to be compatible with each other. So if they update the park rules, they would need to be referring to this or vice versa. I mean, we do have, we do have grills at, in our parks.
Yeah. Do the RV park spots, do they have fire pits?
I don't believe so. No, I don't think they ever have.
Nope. I know we were not...
No, but the people in the RV park who are in a public park would have their barbecue grill outside.
Oh, yeah.
And this is saying they can't do that.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate.
I don't think that's what...
Subsection B, subsection B says outdoor fires used for recreation, religious, or cooking purposes when the fire is entirely contained in a fireplace, barbecue grill, or pit, or other enclosure intended for outdoor recreation or cooking is allowed on private property with the private property owner's permission. So that doesn't cover parks, I understand that. So then if we go down to D, if we were to add on public lands or parks unless approved by the city?
Yeah, I would do something like that.
And we could have a policy that says you can use the grills, you can use...
I think it's in, when you sign the agreement for using a park, it's in there. Because I know I signed it for the park at Chapin.
What we're trying to stop to is people doing warming fires in our parks, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're trying to cover what's allowed, what's not, and be all encompassing, so I think...
You got a fish on it.
As approved by the city, gives us the latitude on our property, on the public property.
And they can get a permit for it.
Well, they have to get a park permit.
Right. They would have to go through...
Or the policy addresses.
Yeah. And then if the policy changes, then that average will stay the same because it's already allowed.
Okay. Who wants to make the motion?
Well, so we were going to try to do two readings tonight, and we have now changed the text, and so I think I'd have to read it. So if you want me to, I could bring it back.
Okay, we didn't change the text of the doc, we changed the...
You changed the text of the code that we're adopting the ordinance for.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I'm just a little reluctant to not have to read it by, you know, read the whole code. I'm happy to read it, but we'd have to read it twice. Or we can just bring a clean one back at the next meeting.
July 2nd?
On July 2nd. Which should be July 4th.
I just want to get it done.
And the changes would be except as permitted by the city and then changing the language on...
Non-residential.
Well, okay, the non-residential aspect and then the extreme fire danger issue rewording there.
Right, so D2, D3, and D4 would change.
Motion, please.
Is that okay with you?
Motion, please.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'll move to bring this back at our July 2nd meeting.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Can I ask a procedural question first? Sorry. The motion was to delay this until the 2nd.
And we would do an emergency.
Okay. Would it be cleaner to do the first reading tonight and the motion say, including changes to be made to those three sections, and then come back and do the second reading? Or would you still have to...
We still have to read it twice.
You have to read it twice.
We'd have to read the whole thing if we don't do it as an emergency.
But it would, but then it wouldn't go into effect for 30 days.
Yeah, we want it to go into effect immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Immediately, yeah.
Thank you. Then my vote is aye.
Commissioner Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Mary McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have communications.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
I'll just say that, or what? No, it's not another Chuck Norris joke.
Okay, all right.
I could look somewhere up, but Juneteenth celebration, end of the Oregon Trail, 2:00
Mr. Wilson.
I have nothing.
Mr. Mitchell.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Marl. Okay, so I'm going to add on to yours. Want everybody to know that there are two books that are part of the Pass It On One Community One Book Read that is going to be part of our Juneteenth celebration, and there is a book giveaway. There's probably only one copy of this book left at the library. But this book, James, will be given out at the Juneteenth event. Also, there is going to be a discussion on Tuesday, the 22nd, at 5:00 PM. The second discussion will be, excuse me, it'll be on James, and then also the other book that we're reading, Big Jim and the White Boy by David Walker and Marcus Kwame Anderson. The second discussion will be 8:19 at 5:00 PM online, and then the third discussion group will be August 29th at 5:00 PM. And so go to the library site and, or scan a QR code to reserve a seat at the discussion, and there may be other additional dates set. So come and join us at the celebration, and we'll look forward to giving all these, we have 150 copies of James, and like I said, the 150 copies of the other book is almost gone. And thanks to our library staff, and thank you to our police department for this work that you did today, Public Works, or the I and I, and all the staff for everything you do every single day to make this an amazing, great community. We are adjourned.